...to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's what please call the roll.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
All right, first item is a motion to approve a settlement between Madalia Curly Cooler and South Village for an amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So, second.
Move by trustee Todd, I'm sorry, second by trustee Juzinski. Any questions?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, um, the motion to approve a settlement between, uh, trustee Bernice Brewer and the village of South Village, Mayor Derek Burgess, Mayor and Derek Burgess personally for four thousand five hundred dollars for attorney fees and four hundred dollars to, uh, Bernice Brewer for filing fees. So, second. Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer, any questions?
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry.
Motion is carried. I have number five public comment. Oh, comments, I have the mic right here if I want to come up. Okay, uh, of course the comments were directed to the mayor, each speaker made to comment on the agenda item only. Each speaker will have one opportunity to speak up for three minutes and make an engagement based on their class or their vote. Please state your name and come up.
John Farneser, eight thirty-two, Mary Vernon Grant. Uh, I just had a question about what was the settlement, uh, for item three there? What was that for?
He's going to listen to everyone.
Oh, that's not, that's sorry. You got a couple titles.
What did she say? Leave the mayor.
She said that after what she's done. Yeah, a couple titles, you bear the D R and the mayor with O R. You did, uh, that before? Oh, is it D R or O R?
Supposed to be O R. I don't really get it. It's not on my house, but.
Oh, it's, oh, it's over the D R.
Where's the mic?
Yeah, it's number O R here. Yeah, okay. He's a man here.
Hold on just a second, just a second. I had asked him to, um, to say he didn't need, but I'm sure he will. Right here.
Judy Castor. Wanted to comment on number four. The, uh, settlement between, uh, trustee Brewer and the village and the mayor and whatever. Indicates here that the only, uh, monetary value to her was the four hundred dollars that she already paid, uh, for the fees, uh, for filing fees. I think it's really sad that a trustee had to take it this far to get her boy across, that they need information, they need the transparency, and it's sad to say transparency still is not being given accordingly. And I think it's sad that the next thing you're gonna see on the, uh, uh, Facebook page is, uh, how much we're being through across the village, when it's really not her fault. Everybody has stood up here and said, "We need transparency," and nobody wants to hear us. But it's gonna go further and it's gonna get harder, but we're not gonna let it go. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that's it. Um, the question that was asked was the settlement for, the settlement was for a lawsuit that was brought, um, by trustee, trustee Brewer to myself, and, uh, the law, the attorney fees is what the, uh, the settlement was for, the attorney fees and also for, uh, four hundred dollar filing fee, uh, that, uh, trustee, um... You asked for three or four? I thought you asked for four. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the, uh, number three was a lawsuit that was brought against, I'm thinking about thirteen different municipalities. Now, a while back, um, this particular person, um, sued about thirteen different municipalities. He was being chased by several police officers in several municipalities, and, um, he felt unjustified or whatever, and, um, they took it and they, uh, he filed a lawsuit against, like I said, thirteen, thirteen different municipalities for wrongful, um, arrest or whatever, and, um, so our portion of that was the seventy-five hundred dollars. How much he's gonna get or how much they're gonna get in this, I'm not sure, but our portion was seventy-five hundred dollars because one of our officers actually was in the pursuit because he went through our town. So that's, that's how that happened. Okay, um... All right, number seven, I'll accept the motion. She got, she has a comment, that wasn't a question. Okay, I, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. So, move by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell, all in favor?
Aye.
We will, up to the board, you want to stay up here for the next one, which will be the town meeting, public hearing. I don't see we got a man here yet, but I see. No, the next one is, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session for personnel matters. Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Now, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee, yes.
Motion is carried. The motion to reconvene back to committee?
So, second.
Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer? Okay, next item is the, the special is, uh, the forensic audit, uh, by, uh, interim director, Anthony Finch.
Good evening, board, mayor, and I'm, um, just briefly, the, uh, people here in last year, I mentioned to you all about what forensic audit, um, I'm in favor of going forensic audit, but I think we should go ahead and start at least the process of getting some bids. Um, I have two at the present time companies that have experience in forensic audit. Hopefully by Friday, I'll have another company that will give me, uh, pricing on their forensic audit. I know a few months ago, we did do an RFP, so at this time, I think we need to do another RFP. So hopefully within the next week, if not two weeks, I will present to you all three individual firms, um, and if you guys make a decision on if we're gonna go with forensic audit, as well as if we're gonna, um, if we're going with forensic audit and which of the three firms you guys would like to go with. And that's pretty much all I have, um, regarding forensic audit, is the question.
I got some questions. Um, so with the forensic audit, I guess number one is, I'm assuming you guys knew this next budget, right? Because this one's pretty much, you know, it was a budget for.
Correct.
Okay. And then, after we did the RFP the first time, um, like, there was never really like a scope of work that was put together, so like, they never said, "We want you to look at this, 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 this." It was kind of really vague in general, so I think we need to like tailor it down. And also, I guess the third thing is, how many years back are we gonna, that's gonna determine the cost, basically, so.
So, my, my recommendation, we saw from you all, um, one of the firms that I did contact sent me over what they call an intake form, and I can stand at the front here tonight and let you guys see it, and one of the questions that you, that you asked is, uh, briefly, describe your suspicion of potential fraud, so that's to answer your point, they wanna know what the scope of work is gonna be, so it's not so broad, I didn't really want to log them straight pretty much. Um, the other, the other part of that, if we go within the next budget, we do gotta get started, because there are gonna be a person you don't wanna, um, um, grab, so.
So, so how many, so how many years back?
Oh, years back, I wanna go sixteen, seventeen, no, yeah, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and then hopefully a time to get down to eighteen, nineteen, but in your issue, maybe do nineteen, twenty. So at least wanna start with sixteen.
So only three years?
Three years, at least.
Why not go back further?
The cost, we can go back, if you guys wanna do fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, at least a three or four year period is what I, what I recommend. We just, we haven't done nineteen, twenty audits, so that year is, right now, it's really irrelevant, but if you wanna go back, okay, it's three or four year period in a way, so maybe fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, but at least a three year period, not four. But then keep in mind, the more years you go, the more it's gonna cost, it'll cost. It doesn't matter if you do fifteen to eighteen or sixteen to nineteen, at least three year period, that way you cover a nice, um, period of time.
Uh, Mr. Finch, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, you know, this has been presented to before about the forensic audit. Now, uh, you mentioned before that, uh, one of the things that they'd be looking for is potential fraud, but, uh, once the, uh, the forensic audit was presented before, we weren't actually looking for fraud or anything like that, we just wanna make sure that we're doing everything right, the right way, okay? This one of the, the, we're not trying to accuse anybody of doing anything, okay? But, you know, things fall through the cracks, you know? People don't know, you have inexperienced people that come on board that do things that, you know, that's not quite kosher. But my thing is that, yes, we need to do this forensic audit, we didn't have to, we should've been doing it a long time ago, you know? My thing is that, uh, for three years, and then it might cost more money to go back, but at least this way, we'll know, and we could feel comfortable about how our finances are done. We'll know what's what, who's doing what, and what we should be looking for for the future. I think it's a good idea, since you brought it to the board, and, uh, I'm hoping the trustees to jump off board and get this done, because we had the finances to go out and look for this money that we have, because a lot of, there's a lot of mismanagement and a lot, a lot of uncertainties about where the money is. So I'm saying this is a great idea, you know, and I'm hoping to pursue it, and I look forward to, uh...
Well, can I just respond? So, uh, trustee Brewer, so regardless of doing things right in our financing, you know, we have auditors, so every year we do an audit, so, I mean, they're the ones who should be telling us whether we're doing something right or wrong. If, if we're gonna have a case for forensic audit, that means that we're saying, we think there was something wrong chipped into this area for us, we're, we're saying there's a problem. So, our normal everyday financial business, they will hopefully catch those things in the audit, which ever we don't have for forensic audit, but we're telling them that, you know, we think there was some opportunity, that there could've been something that went wrong, so can you look into this for us? There, there's a difference, that's what you couldn't have.
Well, and that's what, yeah.
And also what I'm saying, with trustee Brewer saying, there is a difference, the essence of the forensic audit is we suspect suspicious activity, so they are looking for improper action being done. The auditors, um, are the ones that should say the systems, and the internal system are not properly in place, i.e. internal control, segregation, Buddhism, all those things. That's why they give you, you know, the audit, um, of management, just a management, discussion, and analysis report, to go and explain all the inefficiencies that they found. That's different than a forensic audit, so for a forensic audit, they will be looking for improper action as far as moving money around or anything like that, that was hidden, hidden from the audit that South Village has. So it's two different type of audit.
Oh, I understand it's two different audits, but I'm, I'm just saying, I'm in agreement, this is something we have been sort on the same page with ever since I started in the May of twenty seventeen. We know we have financial problems, we know, we know, there's a lot of, uh, not, uh, going ons with the money that trustees are not aware of, we know a lot of money's being moved around and trustees are not being aware of, this is stuff that we know. So, my point is that we welcome the forensic audit, you know, so we could find out, just make us feel better about the finances and how it's done, you know? Cause this way, another thing that a lot of trustees could be educated on, what should, what we actually should be doing, you know, looking at monies and getting grants and all this sort of stuff, things that's been happening all the time, that people, that trustees think they have been getting the handle of, and that's the way they're doing, but that's not actually the way it should be done. You know, the thing, the procedure has to be changed, trustees need to know where the money is, and we can't do that without an audit, you know? This, this is simple as that, and I, I'm, and I welcome forensic audit.
Question. Mr. Finch, when I spoke with you last week, number one, you said the forensic audits, they take a long time. So here's my questions. You're gonna bring us three quotes?
Yes.
Okay, could you find out when you anticipate getting them started? If we do decide on which company we're gonna go with? If we have to make any payment upfront? Because personally, I'd rather see the forensic audit started sooner rather than later, and I believe we talked about budgeting one audit this year, and maybe the second audit, and the third audit in the next budget, or possibly into the next two budgets, depending, because how long did you say a forensic audit actually takes?
I think at least one year and probably six months.
So six months to a year is how long one forensic audit takes? So what we need to do is, in my opinion, I would like to see us move forward as soon as possible, and quote those three quotes, to see if we can get the first audit started in this budget year. And if that means borrowing from, taking from the reserve or taking from the line of credit, I'm prepared to get that started as soon as possible, so I don't wanna put this off personally any longer than we have to, because it takes, like I said, six months to a year per year. As far as how many years are we gonna do? If we do the last three years, and we need to go back further, then we'll know when we can do further in these three years. We've been without a finance director, we've had finance directors come and go, we had one leave on two days' notice, we have financial records that are so far behind, and then we had to bring accountants in to bring our, our, our bank records up, up speed. We don't know that our financial records are anywhere near the order they need to be. So personally, I'm in favor of bringing back the three and getting started this budget year as soon as possible. That's my opinion.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, standing committee requirements, uh, court Marvin Calabro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put in your meeting package, uh, the ordinance nineteen dash zero eighteen, that was ratified July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. The reason I put that in your packet, and we're discussing it at this moment, is because I was asked to show proof of where does it state that trustees, in order to be reimbursed for your committee meetings, that you needed to submit that document along with your agenda. So, in this particular ordinance, it lays it all out for those of you who needed the clarification. Not only does it do that, it tells you each of your committees that you have, your composition, and the roles of. But, what we're gonna talk about more so, that is more aligned to the question for proof that I was asked, if you will get number, number four, under notice requirements. These are things that everyone's not doing, the majority of you are doing, but things that needs to be done. Notice requirements, all meetings will be published at the beginning of each calendar year, as soon as practical. Just as we approved the meeting of the corporate authorities in January, each one of you are supposed to submit your entire calendar, day, night, time, and all of that, of your meetings. That's the notice requirement. Everything else, I think you know. The report to the village board, the standing committee will provide the village board with a brief written overview of the items discussed from time to time. Each standing committee will prepare an annual written report given to the mayor on the activities of their committee, and you're to do that within the first quarter of each year. You know about that in public com, uh, comments, uh, meeting dates and times, that's basically due to the end of number four today. So, now let's go to number ten. Each chairperson shall, as soon as minutes are approved, deposit with the village clerk a signed copy of the minutes of each minute, of each meeting, and copy of the agenda, okay? And so, some things are not legislated by ordinances and resolutions, sometimes we do things by best practice and procedure, past practice, what we've been doing. What was done when I came on board was, there was a form that trustee said to complete right before payday, that listed the date of their meeting, and then at the bottom of it says, "Please attach your agenda." We talked about your submitting your minutes from time to time, just as it said, but for certain, you have to have your agenda. So that's where I got that from. And just to go a little step further, because what's not in the ordinance, and I don't want you to call me on it, but I need you to know that when I say "past practice and procedure," I gave you a packet tonight, that had about eight or nine pages. The very first four pages are copies of emails, either from me to you, or, um, regarding your committee meetings, uh, and this dates back to June first, two thousand seventeen, when some of us first came on board, but then, when the new ones came, the rest of you came on, we talked about it as well. And that is, that your request for reimbursement for your committee meetings must accompany your agenda, but your agendas need to be posted in village hall forty-eight hours, just like regular open meetings at, okay? That's where all of that come from. Now let's go into the fifth page, because then on the fifth page is a copy of the new trustee's orientation. And in, during that orientation, I provided the payroll dates for which, um, we are working on getting you a sheet of that, so that you can know exactly when your reimbursement forms need to be turned in. But topics of conversation were your committee's payroll dates and what was needed for committee meeting reimbursement. So it's very, very consistent that your agendas need to be posted in village hall forty-eight hours prior to your meeting, and then when you submit for reimbursement, you have to attach the agenda. Are there any questions there? Okay, there's some other items that's in that pack that some of you asked to go on the agenda that you'll be presenting, and some of this will go along with that, just to help clarify what the process and procedures are for the village. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, abandoned and vacant property solutions, um, committee director Tanya McCord.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some documents that I wanna hand out to everyone, so that you can take a look at them while I'm talking about the vacant solutions. Okay, so you guys have a couple of documents in front of you. The community development department has been working very diligently on finding solutions for the abandoned and vacant properties here in South Village. Um, one of the solutions that we have been considering is actually, um, working with Habitat for Humanities in the faith, the base community. Uh, the guy from Habitat came out again today to explain more about the program and what they really want to do in South Village. Um, they wanna start with the two houses currently owned by the village, um, and then fixing the houses around those houses. So anybody who owns a home that's around the house, the subject house, they would like to, you know, get it real, or, you know, really fix up the outside of those properties as well. Um, they also talked about having champions in each, like, like, I guess, district, I don't know how you guys, um, set up here, or how we can set something up, where we can have like a, a champion for each area that we're looking to, uh, make the changes in, and really developing a real community revitalization program. Um, so Habitat for Humanities is working with the... So Habitat for Humanities, working with the faith-based communities, that's one solution. The other solution that you have in front of you, I went to talk to the people over in, in Chicago Heights, and they have a couple of programs. One is the abandonment program, where they go in, and if you see a vacant property and you're interested in it, their model is we give them $5,000, and then they can then start the process to allow the village to own that property, and they deed it over to the person who actually put the money down. And that's for their residential properties, and therefore, the commercial properties is $10,000. And I know for us, we really want to give the properties in the hands of people who are actually going to redevelop them, but we also want to, you know, make a little bit of money for the village to support some of our community development activities that we are considering for this year. So, I don't know if that's something we could play around with as far as the amount. You know, maybe we could start the vacant residential properties at 10, and that way the village would get 10,000, get $5,000, and $5,000 to go to actually obtaining the property, and to, you know, so we can get, so we can convey it. And then commercial properties at 20, so the village would get 10 or 15, and then the, you know, the other five would go towards actually us obtaining the property. So that's something that we can kind of play around with, but I think it's something that will really allow investors to come in and make a big difference. Now Habitat is strictly or mostly for homeownership, so it's owner-occupied, and then the other ones, I don't know, maybe there's a program that we could put forth that we could begin with, people are actually going to live in the properties, and they have owner-occupied, and then, you know, if that doesn't work, then we go to the investors. But it's something that we can play around with. Those examples that you have actually have their ordinances in the examples, so that you can take a look. Now, Chicago Heights is a home rule community. We're not home rule, so I'm not sure how that plays into how we can do things here. But that's something that we can explore. So, another, you know, another, some of the houses is just, we can't repair, so we're gonna have to demo them. So that's another approach that we're gonna have to utilize in this effort to revitalize the communities. So, we want to demolition, have worked with the nonprofit Habitat, faith-based community, the abandonment property program, and they also have a nuisance property program, and that's if you have a vacant lot, made, basically attached to your property, it's not being maintained, you could then say, okay, I would want to acquire this lot and maintain the lot while we get the lot, so that you can actually own the lot. But it'd put the lot back on the tax roll, and make the village look a lot better being maintained. So those are the approaches and solutions that, you know, I've come up with to really start to revitalize and really get our hands around the vacant and abandoned properties. You guys have any questions? This sheet right here is, we looked at this sheet as phase one, which kind of coincides with the Carroll and Peterson Street, Peterson Avenue beautification program. And believe it or not, the properties that the village owns are actually in the, in this area.
Are we actually, are we have homes right now that are ready to be demolished, demoed, and putting on that, getting that, keep those ready to be demoed this year, do you have that?
Well, we have several, but we started, I think, back in September. We had three on the list that needed to be demoed, but since we have, we are starting with the Carroll and Peterson, Peterson Avenue revitalization, we've identified at least five in that area that are ready to come down, and that's going to allow not only for beautification, but also it'll help with crime, it'll help with, you know, just a bunch of things that could really be useful for the community to have done for those houses being demoed.
I have a quick question. The grant that we had gotten.
I do.
Whatever it was, I thought it was going to be, they had the grant pending, but I thought also included in there, one, they have two, two houses demolished?
Well, as much as.
Two or three, was that ever done?
No, that was not done yet.
So there's still money left in there?
Yeah, we should have some money left for the grant.
Does that grant expire at any time?
It does. We did, the grant expires, I believe, May, and then the following year, we pick up another $75,000.
These houses, are they demasurable, or are they repairable?
So any houses that are repairable, we don't want to take them down. So they're ones that definitely need to be demolished.
So the ones that are demolished, are the foundations and the footings, are they good, or no?
Not that, I'm not quite sure, but I don't think they're good.
I'm just saying, because those are a lot of those are row houses, I guess.
They are, but the ones that we're talking about are all connected, they need to come down.
Ms. McCoy, there's a property at 2113 Popular, and we've been trying to, well, do something with their property for years. I know it's, they caught on fire back in 2009, and in fact, they had somebody trying to rent the property out. It's foreclosed, gone down. It's a health and safety issue, what that house is, because it's heavily burned down, has mold off on outside and everything. And I know, we talked about this before, previous meetings, and something was supposed to be done about it, but to date, nothing has been done. So can you take a look at that and tell me what's going on with it? 2113 Popular.
Yes, and if you guys.
You should know that one, that's, it's been around for a while.
Yeah, I don't know that one. Okay, so if you guys have properties in your area that you feel like need to be demoed, if you would just send it to me, so that we can take a look at it, because the grant is not going to cover every property, but it will cover some, especially some of the ones that are, like, they're caving in.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things on popular.
Yeah, yeah, so, and if you have them, just let me know, and we'll take a look at it. The other thing that I want to mention was the land bank. We also want to work with the land bank. Russ from South Suburban Land Bank came, we had a conversation, and I do know that we need to, I guess, kind of, we, I guess, modify our resolution, so that, the resolution includes positions instead of a person, you know, so that we always have someone to represent the village on the land bank's board. But that's, that's another one of the actual solutions, is work with the land bank.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
Thank you, guys.
Before you could, if the board, when you get a chance, about the average cost to demo a building from soup and nuts.
$30,000.
To demo?
To demo.
$30,000?
$30,000. That's the average.
On these terms?
Yeah, yeah, $30,000.
Okay, we're at law. Review unsolved service agreement and Code Red trustee Debbie Quay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put in everybody's box over the weekend, the unsolved service agreement, that's Code Red. I did some investigating, I found out that this contract was approved on March 26, 2019. If you look at page 2 of 4 of the service agreement, which is the first agreement, that shows the date that it was approved. If you look further into Exhibit A, and then you see Exhibit B, 1 of 6, on Exhibit B, on the second page, number 4, termination, it says that this contract is going to automatically renew if it's not canceled within 30 days of the date that it was initially agreed to, which is March 26. In my opinion, I don't think Code Red has gone beyond the initial period. I don't know anyone who's gotten any notifications or things on this, and if you look at the actual cost of the Code Red, it was $3,500. So in my opinion, I think, just like we had Mr. Williams stop the SOX contract, which was basically the same thing, where we spent money for services that we did not receive, I think we should direct Mr. Williams, prior to March, February 25, to contact unsolved and cancel this agreement.
Well, Ms. McCoy, I think we talked about this maybe, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. Did you just mention that not everybody was willing to do their part when it comes to Code Red, and that's the reason why it hasn't went forward yet?
Yes.
Yes, sir, trustee, that is what I said. I think that the company has been very diligent in making contact with the village on a regular basis, at least twice a month, asking if our staff is willing to be trained at this point again, if they need to be retrained, blah, 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 blah. I think that when the new trustees, and I need to stop saying new trustees, but when trustees came in, in May, I attended a public safety committee meeting, and we decided, and trustee Williams was there too, because she volunteered to work with Code Red as well, and we identified who really needed the training, and who would really be responsible for reaching out to me and the residents, so that I could reach out to the residents when there is an issue. That's the piece that never happened. That's the same thing that happened with the website piece. And, and as I shared before, I would think that if this board voted on a program, a process, procedure, whatever you would want to call it, then it should not be left, the staff, whether or not they're going to implement it or not. You guys are the ones that make that determination and that decision. So, did I come back and tell on them regularly? No. Did I send them reminders from time to time? Yes, I did. So, just to not do it, because our department heads refuse to follow an ordinance, to me, that's not justifiable. Because then if that's to be, they could take any ordinance that you guys vote on, and you spend all of this time researching and making that determination, and then if they decide they don't want to do it, they just throw it off. And it's not happening, and, and I think at some point in time, we have to stop this and insist that our leadership here in the village accommodate what trustees feel is best for the safe interest of our residents. So, it is on us as well.
So trustee Williams, how many is the Code Red problem? This is obviously my problem, and I would think that we should ask the village administrator to direct his department heads to get on board with this, and it's something that we have paid for in the past. I know that the one-year agreement is coming up, but I mean, it's something that we agree that we needed at some point in time. I think that we should do our part and have the department heads do their part to know that this is going to be useful for everybody, and not just say, we don't get rid of it, because obviously there is a need for it.
If I can respond to two contracts, the SOX contract and the unsolved contract, were both approved by the previous administration, and who was put in place to make sure that the things got followed up on, and that the department heads did their job, that, I have nothing to do with that. But I know for a fact that the website hasn't had changes since 2017, and this contract for the website was actually approved, and we had the village administrator cancel that contract before it auto-renewed. This is just the same instance, regardless to why it didn't happen, there hasn't been anything happening. If it's the department heads, whose responsibility was it to make sure that the department heads were doing their job? And in fact, that if we let this auto-renew, whose responsibility is it going to be to make sure the department heads follow through? We can continue this contract, we won't have any choice if we don't eliminate this contract. We're going to continue with another $3,500. If the village administrator is going to do his job to make sure that the department heads follow through, that's fine. It's great program. I'm not saying Code Red is a problem. What I'm saying is, we paid $3,500 and we haven't used it. Just like we used to pay $2,400 for the website, and we didn't use it. So, I'm just bringing it to the attention of the board, because once March 26 says, we don't have a choice. Whether the department heads are led to do the right thing or not, we're going to be paying another $3,500. So the board can do as they wish. My job is to bring it to your attention.
Okay, so what I, what I can do is, have this put on the agenda for next week, ask that it be voted on by the board to terminate the unsolved service agreement, which is known as Code Red.
No, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I think, well, that's not my solution. I think that we need to ask the village administrator to make sure that the department heads are on board with this before he decides to terminate. I mean, at least give them a chance, because they report to him. And give them a chance to give 30 days, 6 days to get it right. I understand that they might be past our one-year agreement date, and we would have to eat that, but he has a task to get them on board and do an afternoon to use this tool.
Well, the standard is, you're right, is March 26.
26.
So we have 30 days between February 26. So you have another two weeks, so, okay, we can find out and give this task to the village administrator. See, because it is involving the department.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, and just to add to that, even if we were to cancel it before it automatically resumes, now that we know what the problem was, why it didn't work the first time, we could always go back to Code Red at another time and start a new agreement. I don't think that our agreement is contingent on following agreements back to back. We have two weeks to make sure that we can put something in order that we haven't put in order in a year. My thing is, if we can cancel, and this is just my opinion, if we haven't instituted it in a year, we're going to give the village administrator two weeks now to institute it. What we could do is, we could cancel this agreement and go back. Now, I don't know if that, if the costs have changed, I don't know what the ramifications behind that is, but all I'm just wanting to make sure is that we don't cancel within the next two or three weeks, then we're already into the next agreement. Or we could cancel it and start a new one, whatever the board chooses.
What we can do is make it mandatory, because this is something that, that, again, at the time, make it mandatory, that we get input from the department heads. It's not that hard to do. But you're right, if we cancel now, that price may have changed.
Right.
And you don't know what it may be, or, you know, so, I would say, my thinking, my thinking would be, give it to the village administrator, let him break in his meetings that he has with the department heads, and implement that. And then go forward with that.
So, Mr. Mayor, who should follow, but the village administrator, because he's not here now, but who should follow with him on that?
Okay, agenda items replacement order. So, oh, that's it, agenda items replacement order. Code Red, no, sorry, say that. No, she just mentioned that. Okay, agenda items replacement order, trustee, never wait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. Number one, the placement order of the agenda. I noticed that as of, I think it was like April of 2018, general comments from the board of trustees and the mayor has been deleted from the board agenda. And I know it's uncomfortable during board reports on a board meeting agenda, whenever we're giving our board reports, we also have to make our general comments. I think our board reports should be specifically relating to our committees, so people can take advantage of what our committees are doing. But oftentimes, we should also be able to comment on other things, like we used to be able to do under general comments. That's been removed from the agenda, just as it's been removed from this agenda. If you notice, if you don't have an opportunity to discuss one of the discussion items, as a trustee, you have no opportunity to present comment. There is public comment, but there's no comment from the trustees and the mayor. And what happens oftentimes is, when we get to the end of the board agenda, the trustees don't have a place to comment, but the mayor can comment. And that's not out of the agenda, so that's like a violation of the Open Meetings Act, if you're not going to follow the agenda. So I think we either need to bring back general comments from the trustees and the mayor, or we just need to, when we get to the last item on the board agenda, go straight into adjournment. And also, related to this, as far as agenda items, I've asked before that we move executive session to the end of the agenda, rather than the front of the agenda, and make that the place where it always is, and then only have to change the order of executive session if there's action to be taken. Just like there was tonight, where we went in for a few minutes, supposedly, and we were in executive session for 40 minutes. And I think that if we would have left it at the end of the agenda, that would have been fine, we could have had our business done, and residents could leave, and then we could go in executive session, there's no action to be taken. But we have. But we have it at the beginning of our board meeting agenda, and oftentimes, there's like, the, the motion to move it is not stated properly, and now we have to stumble through that. When nine times out of ten, what we're going into executive session for, there's not requiring any action. So, I've asked this before, I'm putting it on record, that I think as a rule, we should move motion to recess to executive session at the end of the agenda, and bring it up on the agenda if there's action to be taken. And that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, first of all, you may mention that the, there is nothing on this agenda for comments from the trustees. Turn the page over to the back and say that. Little comments from mayor and trustees.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't see that.
I apologize for saying, but let me, I didn't say anything. I didn't see that. Thank you.
Second of all, the reason it has always been this way, since I've been a trustee here, that executive session is the beginning, because a lot of times, you have items there that require people that are actually on the clock getting paid to be present for those agenda items. And I'm sorry for those, uh, uh, executive sessions. And sometimes you may not need that person there anytime, but that, and you're right, if we had an executive session today at the end, and we had the lawyers here to do that, to wait until the end to do that, they're getting paid, to we get through with this whole agenda, that we can get them getting out at that particular time, that was the reason. And that's one of the reasons why you voted at the beginning. But I think we're going to have to have a, I don't know, for the class, school, or whatever, how to remove items off the agenda, how to, um, um, put them in place. In other words, how, how that motion is, is actually presented to, to change the order of the, uh, particular agenda, item on the agenda at that particular time. Uh, as far as the, um, time-consuming, I mean, we're here every meeting, I don't know about to conduct business. And when you conduct business, it shouldn't be a whole lot of back and forth, more than business. It should flow, shouldn't be arguments, it shouldn't be whatever the, that happens. It shouldn't happen, we should conduct business, vote on the things, yes, up and down, move on. The comments you can have, or the questions you should have before this happens. Not come at the time that we have the meeting and ask some other questions that you could ask prior to that. So I'm sorry that the people have to sit here and listen, but it is business, we're taking care of business. I don't know, sometimes we need to take a, take a look, some of us trustees and mayor, and go to some of the villagers and see, that's how that happens. Some of them do sit there and argue for two hours, some of them conduct business and move on. And if you have questions, that's why the agenda, I thought, will be handed out ahead of time, so you get a chance to ask the question that you need to ask, and get clarity at that time, and not wait until you have, you know, at the time to get rid of the order that I have a question, unless it's something urgent, but not a discussion. So, I mean, you always have opportunity to change the agenda or to circumvent the agenda at the time of the meeting. You always have that opportunity. You want to put it at the end, or if you want to move to have that put at the end, there's a way to do that. It's not something that, you know, that you're going to have to do all the time. As far as the comments from the trustees, this is something to look back at for hours, uh, trustees, that, that the comments will come when you gave your report. That was done prior to my, some hours of trustee, but that happened. And I think people clerked at that time, and that was the reason we gave the report, and then you give your comments at the time for anything, anything it may be. Now, if you want to go back to having on the board meeting nights, because committee meeting is, is always at the end. But if you want, but now, one thing about it, we don't have a lot of comments, uh, like tonight, for the, um, um, special meeting, it was comments only for the special meeting. In town hall, we had that, it'll be comments just for that, for little meetings we call for that, only for that purpose. But our committee meetings, you can ask questions, but now, if, if, if the board wants to go back and, and, and put comments from the trustees at the end of the board meetings, then they can, then, then if that's the case, then there shouldn't be any comments during, or dissertations, or whatever it is, during your, um, um, your board, your board report. So, so, so if that's what you want to do at the time, and have a special item for trustees, comments at the board meetings, that's fine, but I'm not going to, you're not going to have to do that during your, your meeting. If you have questions, quite naturally you ask questions. But if you have something that you want to bring up, that's not in regard to your, um, report, it could be put at the end, that's something you can look at.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to what you just said, what I said was that it was removed on the board meeting agenda in April of 2018, it hasn't been on since April of 2018. Yes, I personally would like to see it, and yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I did, you know, miss it on tonight's agenda. I apologize. But yes, on the board meeting agendas, I would like to see it at the end. That's just me personally.
That's something that has to be voted on, and, um...
Okay.
I know, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Right, okay, that's true. It was voted on in eighteen, I'm saying.
Oh, it was voted on in eighteen, so, okay.
Yes, it was. It was voted on to, to change it, so that what, so that must be voted on. Do you want that put on the, um, agenda?
Yes, please, I'm sorry. And the last thing I have on that, um, is agenda items. What that means is, how, what, what does a trustee have to do to get items on the agenda? Because there's a state statute that says that two or more trustees wants an agenda item on the agenda. It should be on the agenda. I asked to have something put on the agenda twice, and twice I was told it could not go on the agenda. What?
That you couldn't put on the agenda.
Last week I was told I could not put an agenda item on the agenda, because it was not under the purview of trustees.
I'm asking, the question I asked her was, who told you?
That I could not do?
Yes.
I got an email from the clerk, and I thought she said the mayor said it wasn't under the purview of the trustees.
You didn't call me to ask me, because I...
Well, I have an email from the clerk, I caught it up on my phone, if I, if you want me to.
Oh, okay, because I wasn't, I, okay, that's what I'm asking you.
I got some original email.
My question is, trustee, is, and it goes to all trustees, I'm going to make this clear. I'm going to make this clear. I'm here most of the time. You all have my email address. Email me for everything else. Call me, and, or come by. I see you guys here every time you come in, I'm here. There's nothing wrong with going across the aisle and saying, "Mayor, can I talk to you for a minute?" But this, I can't talk to him because he argues to it. I can't talk to him because he want to do this, that's a bunch of whatever. That doesn't even make sense. I'm not a, 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 a mayor or anything like that. But I'm not, but I am, I am not going to sit here and say that, okay, we can't talk to you. All the trustees come in, trustee Ty comes in, trustee Jositsika, and Gary Bell comes in all the time.
How often do you see me?
Uh, I never, but I see you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't...
Well, we're not, I, I didn't make this a discussion. I'm not making, I'm just saying, trustees have came into my office. Nobody can, nobody can accept for two trustees, "I can't talk to you," and I'm going to talk to you with email. Only thing I'm saying is, if there's a question or there's something that you're not clear on, ask. Don't wait until tonight, ask. I'm here, ask that question. There's nothing wrong with that. That's all it is.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked it to go on the agenda was to ask the question. The clerk every week sends an email to all the trustees, asking what they want. You took it in an entirely different direction, Mr. Mayor. The clerk sends an email every week, asking the trustees, "What would you like to see on the agenda?" This is the second time I asked for something to go on the agenda in response to the clerk's email. The clerk's email response to me was, the last time that the agenda item I requested will not be on the agenda, because the item I wanted to discuss is not under the purview of the trustees per the mayor. Now, I could forward you the emails, but it's the clerk who chose to use email. It's an email from the clerk. I'm going to forward you, I'm going to, I'm going to forward you the email. All I'm saying is, state statute says if two trustees ask for an item to be on the agenda, it must be on the agenda. I will be resubmitting the item that I wanted on the agenda, and I will resubmit it in the form of two trustees requesting it, and therefore, it will be on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Why do you say it like that, trustee?
Is your argument?
I'm not, I'm arguing with you?
I have to...
I'm arguing with you? It's a good question, okay. Okay, um, rehab policy, trustee Verne H. Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before you, I put in your package, uh, ordinance, um... Amending Article Two of Chapter Seventy-Eight Utilities of the Village Code. Now, um, the ordinance review committee and also, um, I gave her, it's in your box, ordinance review committee, also, um, the attorney and public works. All of us got together and we went back and forth with this particular, uh, ordinance two or three times. So what we came up with, we wanted to amend the article, uh, amend it Chapter Seventy-Eight. Then also, we, uh, want to submit a resolution to approve the, uh, village rehab, uh, temporary work policy. And then there's a copy of the actual, uh, policy and procedures to be, uh, holding on. And if you go through the, uh, particular ordinances, it indicates the changes, and the biggest changes, uh, biggest change, and, uh, we talked to Mr. Finch about this, is that on the first line of, uh, the resolution, it says, effective, um, uh, whatever date, all South Village Rehab property shall have a meter. Uh, any investor who comes in and wants to do business with South Village has to have a meter first. Uh, we still go with the two-twenty-five, uh, for the thirty-day period, and, uh, uh, according to Matt Burns, the, uh, original, uh, ordinance had to be amended. So he amended that, and also he gave us a copy of the policy. So everything's in place, what we've been asking for, and everything's in agreement. So, uh, if you got any questions, I'd like to open it up for discussion again, but everything's there in place to, um, start the, uh, process.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
At ordinance review, because when this, this first came before, it's ordinance review, when it came to the ordinance, said we did not want anything changed. Now I see everything's deleted out of it. Okay, so now you have a resolution that you're going to adopt, um, policy and procedure. Now, one of the things, when I talked to Mr. Finch, in the ordinance, we agreed at that time that it should say that they have to own a meter. Okay, they have to purchase a meter to get the rehab order, because that way they can track it. But looking at this, everything is completely, in this ordinance is completely Xed Out. So it's almost like this ordinance doesn't exist, that everything's being taken out of it. Now, your policy and procedure is one thing, but this ordinance should read exactly how it is, except add the meter. That we should add the meter in the ordinance.
So you want to, um, add that particular language to the ordinance, and everything else is fine?
Well, I have to go through it, I mean, we just got this tonight.
Okay, well, okay.
So, I had an ordinance review meeting, and I converted before then. But to take this ordinance and remove everything from it, when it only, I would say, needs the language of it, you have to have a meter, they have to purchase a meter. Now, I see that you have the cost of the meter, now I know there's two different, uh, costs for meters. So, it's two hundred dollars. Has that been verified? Because I know that there's...
That's been verified.
Yeah, there's two different, um, amounts.
Well, it has been verified by the, uh, public works, and also, um, I can get the attorney, Matt Burns, that one, uh, line to the ordinance to, uh, mirror what's in the, uh, policy and procedures. Uh, other than that, I, uh, I'm seeing changes, unless anybody else has...
Well, I, I have a question too, so...
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to read this, I got this today, um, but on the third page where it says...
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, I'm looking at the resolution, uh, Exhibit Eight. It says, on the third page, you post on the revenue to a water account, so...
Says water count, on the third page?
On the third page, posting revenue to water account. So it says that all water we have revenue will see should be being restricted and going to be used for water we have. Like, what is that really mean? And then this, this number here, I'm assuming that's the, the G O code to, you know, when you post the water to. But what account is this? Uh, is this a bill, is this a bill account?
Starts with three hundred? Starts with three hundred?
Yes.
Okay, this, this, uh, uh, after talking to Mr. Finch, we had decided that, you know, once we get, we tried to, um, have separate line items for the water, everything goes into the water department. So what's been happening is that, uh, certain positive monies have been used specifically for rehab money. I mean, for rehab, you know, things. But what happens is that the money is taken and put in the, uh, general fund, and we actually don't have some kind of accounting on how many water meters we paying for, you know, what funds are being used ac- actually for rehab, uh...
Wait, that's money, before you say water fund goes in, water money goes to general fund, that's not true.
Water fund.
No, the water money that we receive, it, it goes to the water fund. It doesn't go to the general fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, water fund.
So I mean, so this is something I would like to talk to Mr. Finch about, when he's available, uh, in front of us, at, at committee meeting.
I don't know where he's...
Uh, so maybe if we could put this on next to, uh, committee meeting agenda, because I, 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 I think I get what you're trying to do, but at the end of the day, all water money is all water money. Like, to say that you can only use this for water rehab, like, what does that mean?
Well, all of it is water money, but we want to separate it and start keeping account of what's coming in and what's coming out, you know? Uh, that's the sole purpose of, uh, finding out, um, how much money is allotted for, you know, rehab.
But what difference does it make? Like, it's all water money, it's all water money, like, it, it shouldn't matter if it's water rehab or regular water or sewer, it, I mean, it's, it's all water money.
Well, suppose I want to make a, somebody wants to make a report, and then say, well, okay, I give you, um, grant money, whatever, based on the kind of money you got in for water rehab, okay? Or we want to bring in some meters, we want to know how many meters, uh, how much meters are costing. Things like that, we need to know. We want to separate that pot of money, so we could, uh, report how much money has come in in that particular line item.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary, but also you have to keep in mind that, you know, by separating this specific water rehab money, this is more work for the finance department to do, because I mean, it's not just posting to the water account, you're posting to a specific, it, this is another step from them. So, and that's something that, you know, his department is going to have to take on, and so I'd like for him to discuss with us this on the next agenda, uh, just so we get some clarity around it, because, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, and we charging for the, the meters now, uh, but just this, this posting of the water account. I'm, I'm just a little curious about that, so, if he can come talk to us, uh, before we decide to vote on it, so to be clear.
Well, I'll get that information for you, why, why he wants to separate the water account, because it, you know, it could be just taken out, as long as we, um, you know, get the water meters in there before anybody, before residents or the investor side's work. So we need to know how much we paying for these water meters that come in. But that's a question I'll put to Mr. Finch, and, uh...
But I guess one more thing is, to trustees Todd's point, so the, the resolution, I mean, it's like the ordinance, it's all marked, it's all like blanked out, right, it's all, it was all crossed out. Why can't we just add that language to the cost of the meter, and make it been required, and add it to this one, instead of creating a whole new policy over here? All you have to do is add that language to the old one we already have. There's, there's really no difference.
Well, uh, the, this is the way to turn it, given to me, but, uh, there, I can ask him to add that one particular line to it, to the, uh, ordinance, and, uh, we could be done with that one.
So you want to add, so, so you want to ask to amend this ordinance and, and put that language in?
Add, just add that one line to it.
Okay, so we don't need this one anymore?
Which one?
Exhibit Eight.
The what?
Exhibit Eight, the one that you provided, the resolution, uh, is policy and procedures. Are you saying we don't need this anymore?
No, no, we're just going to add it, like, uh, Exhibit Eight, we'll add the first line to ordinance, to the ordinance. So they can mirror each other, right?
See, the policy and procedure, by putting it going through, like, we just got this, so, I really wanted to go through and read it. But here, it'll say the application of permit, hours of operation. You're not going to find that in the ordinance itself. So they have to have some type of policy as to, um, how they're establishing, you know. Part of it, I see in here, is part of it's in the ordinance, but the rest of it would not be. The, when I talk to Mr. Finch, the ordinance should read, if you want it to read, that they have to purchase a meter. Now, I know we talked about the cost of a meter, there's two different costs. There's two different, I think one is like one seventy-five and the other's- I don't know what the difference is of the two, but there's a difference.
There's a difference.
So, yeah, there probably is. So you might wanna look also at the cost of the meter, um, as, here it says two hundred dollars, okay, I agree with the fifty, fifty dollar administrative fee. I think that's how this ordinance reads, that we have an administrative fee. But our committee's going to meet on, um, Monday. But before we have the attorney do anything, let our committee discuss it, but I think that it, what you need to add is that they have to purchase a meter. That's the bottom line. But your policy and procedure is listing your permit, um, things with outstanding balance, disconnection of service. So you're gonna want that, but you also make this ordinance.
Gotcha, so when I would be in favor of, if we add that language to the ordinance, that we can approve that, if we could vote on that actually possibly next week, because that's all we're doing is adding that language, that you have to purchase a meter. Then we can come back and talk about the policy and procedure behind it.
Well, I won't have the meeting till Monday. So you're not gonna have, see, what, what I wanna see is when we do these amendments, that it's in our package, so you have the weekend to look. I don't wanna give someone something on Monday or Tuesday, and there you are trying to read it, like we're doing tonight. Um, it gives us time to deal with, so, um, I would say wait till I have my meeting.
Sure.
We can then, you know, it's not like an emergency, because it's still in place, this ordinance is. Um, and then we can go down and maybe at the end of the month. I mean, so I wanna be sure for some time that you see it before we go down.
And then also, I'd be just curious to know how many people actually come and ask for rehab water? I mean, it, I mean, ten people, or we, twenty, I mean, I don't think we know that, so I think the front desk will have some better answers on how many people actually come and ask for rehab water, hopefully. Thank you. You keep saying purchase the meter. They own, I, I-
I apologize, they have to-
It's a security policy. Right, it's just a security policy.
Well, I say purchase, because they're gonna have to pay. But I can always, they can't take the water.
Wait, they can't take it with them?
No, no, they do, I mean, they're right, they do take what they leave.
I just wanna keep it fair around here.
No, they're gonna have to. However you like, yeah, maybe- They'll take what they leave, uh, no, that's fine.
Okay, for clarity, for clarity, we're gonna add the, uh, first, uh, uh, line for the rehab, uh, to the ordinance, uh, to make sure that every investor or resident has a vehicular property. And, uh, secondly, you're gonna, uh, send it back to ordinance and, uh, do you do that?
No, what we're gonna do is, it's gonna come to ordinance review. You want, now, if I understand, trustee Brett, if you agree with that as well, we were talking about just adding the meter, that's just add that line.
Correct.
The first line.
That's in ordinance.
But before I send it to the attorneys, let me go before the ordinance review.
It's already been at the attorneys.
It's gonna have to go back for them to amend this ordinance. Because it's all crossed out, we're gonna have to add a line.
Right, yeah, all you have to do is just put in the line from the, from the, um, resolution.
Right, but I want it to come before the committee.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, they, okay, what she's trying to say is, will you change anything in this resolution? Does she go before the, the, uh, no, the attorneys first? So they can put the language in, then go before the, uh, ordinance review to make sure that it's, because the attorney's gonna do the same thing, but you make sure that it's, you know-
Well, I wanna break it before the committee to say this is what they want to see. And before I send it off to the attorneys, they could, you had that language, and I'm gonna say, no, that's not what we want. That, but however you wanna do it.
I see, so you want her to present you with the language she wants in there. And then you bring that to your ordinance review and then-
And then send it off to the-
And then send that off to the attorneys.
But wait, wait, wait a minute. This language is already been added per the attorney, okay? All we have to do is take that particular line item and add it to the ordinance. Why do we have to send it back? It's already been added to, because it needs to be added.
Because trustee, here's the thing, by you just doing that, will it change the way the effectors want it to be? Maybe you just cannot just insert certain words and think that's the way it is. There's certain ways, if you didn't do, if that's the case, then you wouldn't use the ordinance, anything when it comes to that. You can just copy paste whatever it is that you wanna change. You wanna make sure that whatever language that you have is, is compatible. You don't wanna just add two words, say, okay, let's do this. Those two words may keep you in court. So that's why she wants to review it. What you, she, you tell, she's telling you to put in there what you would like to see. They review it, they send it off to the lawyers, and then they, she brings it back to the board.
But I also wanna check with Mr. Finch, because two hundred dollars-
Wanna make sure that everything that he did-
Because something with that two, I remember it saying there were two different amounts.
Well, there's, there's two different, the meters are different. A commercial meter is a little bit different than a residential.
And it might need to state that in here, because if you have a commercial, you can use that, and then you have a residential, so that I think-
And then, and then commercials, and you said two hundred dollars.
Right.
Correct. And to say they should have been charged two fifty.
Yeah, whatever it is.
But that is, they're always supposed to be charged a hundred seventy-five, and you're charging two hundred. So I think that's, I, I wanna talk to Mr. Finch, I'll come in this meeting. And you may have to put the two, but then I mean-
Well, then, we'll, we'll wait until you guys bring it back. I mean, it's, it's a good idea to start it off and, and to, uh, get it, uh, on the, on board and get it started. And, uh, we can go from there.
Okay.
Anything else, uh, trustee Brewer?
No, that's it.
Ordinance Seventeen, that's-
Oh, I'm sorry, come in, I didn't, you didn't do the next one for me.
What did you?
Agenda items request and requirements.
Okay, agenda items and requirements. Request and requirement.
Well, this, this is sort of redundant, and I'm pigging back on what, uh, trustee, uh, Williams was talking about earlier. It is a state statute that, uh, indicates that anytime you want something on the agenda, it has to, uh, it can be brought to the, uh, item can be brought to the agenda if we have two trustees, I just wanna put that on back there. Also, uh, that, uh, our county's payable report, I would like to see it back on the, on the, uh, back table. There's no reason why we shouldn't have the, the county's payable report. We should be able to review what they're talking, what we're talking, what trustees are talking about. I don't know who made the decision to take it off the back table, but it should be put back there along with the Asia report. We should get an Asia report every two weeks, uh, related to the county's payable. That way we can tell if something's way over a hundred twenty days or whatever. And those are items that should be on the back table and also Asia report provided to the, uh, uh, trustee, you know, on a regular basis. Uh, I'd like to open up discussions for that, and, uh, any comments?
Uh, so I have a comment on the Asia report. Um, well, actually, on the county's payable too. So I think the reason why it was removed from the back, um, before the vote happens is because sometimes we decided to remove items from the county's payable. So therefore, if a resident gets a copy and they think this is gonna be voted on, and we text them off, then they have a correct copy. So therefore, I think the way the goal is, is they should, the residents come the day after the meeting and get a corrected copy of the county's payable with whatever changes we might have made that night before. And then in regards to the, uh, Asia report, I would think the best thing to do is to ask for a copy of Asia report after we vote on the county's payable and pay those bills, because that would be, give you a better picture of how much we actually owe. Because all the bills that we owe and are gonna vote on are gonna be on the Asia report. So it's gonna be seen a little higher than what it really is, because once we vote, it's gonna come down a substantial amount of money. So I think that it's best to just ask for that after we, uh, vote on the county's payable.
Mr. Mayor?
From what I've heard from most of the residents, the reason why they want the county's payable on the back of the table before the meeting is because they feel it's their money. And if they have, if they want something that they wanna dispute or ask, why is the village approving to have certain things paid? That's the only opportunity they have to do that, is prior to the passage of the county's payable. So I understand that sometimes if we put county's payable back, or everything on the county's payable may not get approved, but if you just super close it after opening the copy, it can't be used as if it's a final copy. This is something the residents have been asking for for quite some time. Uh, I do know that this is available, I believe Mr. Finch makes it available at the, um, front desk after the fact. But I think what the residents are asking for this, they want it before the back, in case they want a question. I'm just putting that out there. The board can choose to do what they wanna do, but I understand the residents' concern. When I was the president, I used to do the same thing. I looked at the county's payable before the board approved it. Sometimes they have actually, you know, pointed out some very significant questions prior to the passing the county's payable, so I appreciate when they do that, but that's all I need to say, and I think-
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, to go on, uh, to, uh, he had to talk about the, um, comment section. Uh, it should be separated in-
Trustee, 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 you're, you're, you're part of the request, the requirement, agenda item request and requirement.
Now, I'm, I'm finna tell you what, what, uh, need, what should be required, what are the requirements, so I just need to explain to you. So anyway, the, uh, comment section, uh, a lot of times trustees come up and we comment on certain items. However, uh, during this time, you know, we really don't get any documents until, like, say, this is, I wanna talk about the water or something like that. We don't get, uh, documents until like Friday before or what we, uh, day before. You know, instead of holding these documents, we should be able to get them as soon as possible. Uh, the documents, uh, I know the village clerk, uh, strides for ten o'clock the next day. A lot of times you don't get documents until the end of the day, end of Friday or something like that, it happens. We never get the copy of the documents until right before we finish commenting on something. I'm just saying we need to be more diligent in getting the, supporting documents to the trustees, so we can take a look at it. We don't, a lot of times we don't have these things, you know, uh, county's payable is one thing, Asia report is one thing. Why should we have to sit there and wait at both we're gonna vote on it or we're gonna discuss it? We, we can't discuss things if we don't have supporting documents, that's, that's what I'm saying. We, they take, we take time and we're not getting the information. And yet, we wanna, and yet, somebody wants us to vote on it, but you don't have any supporting documents for it. So I'm just saying, if we're gonna work on something and we're gonna vote on it, we should get the supporting documents in a timely frame, so we could discuss and, and work on it. It will be-
Okay, uh- Okay, stop, stop, okay.
Excuse me, excuse, point of order, point of order, point of order.
First of all, um, as far as documents to trustees on time, um, if you're, is there something that you, that you see, I mean, you get to agenda, I think, by Friday? Then to, to find out what's gonna be voted on the next Tuesday? If you have a question about it, and you don't see the documentation? People will try and ask to find out where it's at. I mean, a lot of times whoever's supposed to be doing the presentation hasn't turned in the documentation. That's very simple. Whoever's supposed to do it, if, if, if given a report and you got a question about it, they probably haven't turned it in yet. So that would be, uh, coming upon you, say, okay, I didn't get this. I didn't get this and I, and I need to see this. You got Friday, Monday, and then Tuesday, before the meeting. So you have time to, to come and ask and say, okay, well, I'm gonna look at this. I see, as I said before, I see a lot of times come in and if you need, is there something that you, ask. Uh, don't wait on somebody, not gonna wait because of, ask and say, I haven't received this, uh, whatever it is, report or documentation that is about to be voted on. Can I see more into it? Can I, can I, can I see more input or can I see more documentation in regard to that? But to say it's not happening, okay, a lot of things gonna happen. So, but if you just sit there and wait for somebody to put it in your box or whatever, a lot of times that doesn't happen. So if you, if you, if you that, you know, if you really, really wanna see it, it would be say, okay, I need to see this. That's all, that's, that's not hard to do.
Only thing I was saying, Mr. Mayor, is that we should do, I do diligence and try to get more information. Believe me, I am one of these trustees that asks for stuff all the time. You know, we can't get that information, and you know it. So I'm just saying, we do, okay. I know you don't know. But anyway, we making our business to get information, you know? I'm going, I have the floor.
I'm not worried about the floor. But one thing is not gonna happen tonight, trustee. We're not gonna go back and forth-
You finna go out?
We're not gonna go back and forth with any windows.
We're going back and forth, I'm talking to-
We're not gonna keep doing that, because every time I say something, you say something else. We're not gonna go back and forth with that.
Mr. Mayor?
We're supposed to be making the best of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Now, why do I have any windows?
I'm offering my co- comments, okay? I have the right to speak, I have a floor, and I would appreciate it if you stopped interrupting me. This is my opinion.
But, but you, so can you interrupt me?
Okay.
Go ahead, finish what you have to say.
And, and, yeah.
Fin, see, there we go, there we go, finish what you have to say. Finish what you have to say.
There we go, where we going?
Are you through with your report?
I'm finished with my comment.
Okay. Ordinance, um, Seventeen, that's Arizona's zero, zero, six, Mary Bell. Trustee Mary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've been just looking here, and we're still waiting on assignment being erected or red, what even, printed for trustee Williams and trustee Schultz. That was approved. They did that to us, the first, the first term, the first part of your term. So going three years now, they're still not, they're still not put up. And then I've been compiling a list of others, which we appointed, appointed and volunteers over thirty-plus years. And I just, you know, I need to, is, would it be suitable for me, do you want a paper written on each person, or can I compile them all together and go out and collect this among signatures? I mean, because that's the people, now, I don't know who these people are anymore.
I mean, as far as, you talk about something new, now, as far, as far as with the ones that were voted on, it's just a matter of purchasing those signs. And having to put it in designated area. Now, I don't know which ones you're talking about. Now, as far as any new candidates, then yes, you have to go through what the ordinance have.
What can we amend the ordinance?
You can amend anything you want, if you have, if that's what you wanna do. I mean, if that's, if you wanna amend that ordinance, like trustee, uh, Brewer amended that ordinance. You wanna do that and bring that before, and then, then put the language in, have the board vote on it, yes or no, that's, that's the procedure to do that. I'm not saying enough, that's what we call amended, enough cannot be amended if it's amended because it's the majority.
Right, because most of it we can, there's not a whole lot here for people who have volunteered or worked for the village for thirty-plus years or whatever.
But if you wanna do that, I mean, like I said, if you wanna amend that and, and, and champion that, then they have to come up with, you know, and, uh, put it, put it like, how you want, how you want it to be, what you knew requires. Bring it for the, uh, uh, ordinance review committee, and then after that, they can put it in a ordinance form. You just have to read all of them, whatever the, just our first thing that we started, I didn't wanna change.
Um, there's a, like, for the former fire chief, you know, I, I'd like to see stuff like that sooner than later.
Okay.
You know, to him.
I understand. We had one time talking about putting the, the, the mayor's in here.
Well, they, well, they used to use pictures of the mayors, we don't, we don't have.
I know, but I'm just saying, when this place first got built, they were talking about putting the pictures up. It's, it's here, it never happened either, so I just thought we'd work on.
All right, well, then for now, I mean, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to sit for now.
No, I'm just saying, you can, I mean, that would probably, I guess, they, before the, it's just, that would have, that would have to be checked every time. They, they have to buy those, get those signs, and put them, you know, go them off.
All right, what is that, or it has to come for you, correct? That order has to come for you?
No, that, that's, no, that is still, I mean, it, it is in there, I just, they just haven't done it. They just haven't, they just go, they asked for your purchase, yeah, that's not a problem. I, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think, was one of them purchased? I think one was, and I think one was moved out. And one was, but it just wasn't purchased. I mean, I'm sorry, it just wasn't, so, I can check on that, and I, I have a little bit of memory to check with, with the, uh-
All right, I think you have a trustee time, good language, yeah.
Well, yeah, for, yeah, you're talking about two, exactly, you're talking about, you're talking about the, the flag, you're talking about having the order changed, yeah.
Well, yeah, we need, the two that are already approved need to be done. Any, you know, over retired police officers, all that stuff. That's all we know. They serve their time.
Well, you're gonna, what you have to do is look at this ordinance, and it talks about a lot of the officials. Okay, that's what it's talking about. So when you're wanting to do an amendment, you wanna include other things. Um, I see this ordinance that if they wanna have, it looks like a sign, they have to have- they have to have fifty signatures from residents. And sometimes as time is going on, some of the people that you want to honor, you may have residents don't even know who they are. So, you may want to look at, at changing some of the language, but it sounds like you also want to add to this, because this is for elected officials. So, we, you know, come up with something and then we'll, we'll go before, you know, the ordinance review, while we're organizing if you'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The ordinance that trustee Bell pulled out of the front office for seventeen dash zero zero six is not the ordinance that's online, the one that was approved. I have a copy of the one that's actually. The one that he pulled, he said, you got it out of the front desk, right?
No, no, you're saying that one that was approved.
No, seventeen dash zero zero six was approved the night of the transition between the old board and the new board. The actual copy of the correct ordinance is online.
Wait a minute, you're saying that this ordinance, zero zero six, was?
The one that's filed in front is not, I'm going to pass this down. That's the ordinance that was printed offline, that's, that's the actual ordinance. The one that trustee Bell has doesn't have a signature page and.
Right, because that was printed.
But this one is the one online, that was the last ordinance that was approved by the old board as they transitioned to the new board. And I just printed it out so that you can see. That's the one that should be up front, just pointing it out.
The one I printed off is the one that's in the file?
We can't hear you.
When ordinances are amended or whatever, even though this one was from two thousand seventeen, it does not get tossed away. So, when the former village clerk was here, she evidently placed it in the cabinet or got in the cabinet for two thousand seventeen, okay? So, that's there. What year is that one? Is number two thousand?
Seventeen.
But what number?
Zero, I, number zero zero six.
You have all zero zero six? So, then I don't know what happened because I wasn't village clerk then.
Yes, and when I was the village clerk, there's a, the copy that trustee Bell has, there's a page attached to the end that I did not put out there. I don't know how that one got in the.
I mean, this, this, this seems to be the same ordinance. And the, the, the one that was actually signed, or this is not signed, but it was actually voted on, has everything the other one does have, except this signature page is not on here. And also, the certification page is not on the one that you just handed. But it's on this one you just told, you just gave.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
So, but it's, it's, in essence, it's the same one. So, it's just, this one here has something that the, that the clerk would, would, would keep in her records.
That Gary last page does not go with that ordinance at all. Gary last page, what trustee Gary Bell gave out, was a copy of the template for the motions that I provided you guys for when you need to submit a motion. So, that has nothing to do with that ordinance.
Okay, but what you, what you said, it was, like you said, if you want to change or you want to amend, you should know how to do that, okay? Public comment? Yeah, let me, let me get you a break, I'm so sorry. Oh, there, there, okay. Do you remember, press this little button, I didn't press it, so it turns green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my name is Dionne Miller.
I can't hear, can't hear you, better hear. Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, evening, my name is Dionne Miller. I'm here as an employee of the Nancy Conwy Public Library. Just as soon as yesterday, I started a position there as a program liaison. Tonight, I was sent here to represent the library, just as a person of inclusion, most certainly diversity. We have a lot of new programs that are coming up in the library and we are really, really wanting to engage the community and get everyone involved. So, I'm here tonight just to welcome the self-village residents to the library. At this current time, we do align ourselves with the public events committee. Just with, right now, they have their valid types of veterans, we're collecting those there at the library. There's also an opportunity to fill one out here at Village Hall. So, I was definitely just introducing myself, making everyone in self-village aware that there is an engagement program that is going on at the library. We do want people to feel welcome. I can't tell you for myself, I'm the person who are putting together these programs, so my programs are very diverse. And most certainly, I'm all about inclusion and that's including everyone in the village. I was welcomed here, so I, I thank you for welcoming me to the village and as you guys can see, there was an opportunity there for me that I think is a great enhancement to self-coverage.
Judy Cast here. I wanted to comment on the accounts payable discussion. And I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but our group is all together. We're not stupid. We know that if you decide you're not going to pay something for whatever reason it be, we could make our own notes on there. We don't need you to pull it and then fix it and give, and then tomorrow you run in and get it. We don't have the time for that. And in all the years that I've been in this village, which is over fifty, the accounts payable was never a that great a concern as to the village residents seeing that there's something going on or not. Trustee Williams is correct. We want to see it because we want to see it before it's voted on so that we could comment on it, and we have commented on it multiple, multiple times. Why are you paying out this when you haven't done that? Accounts payable is important to us. It's part of what we've been fighting for. It's part of the reasoning for the forensic audit. Things aren't right. Things are getting hidden. And then all of a sudden, you swipe accounts payable from us. But the reasoning behind why you're swiping it from us doesn't add up. Things have been changed on the accounts payable, year after year after year after year. It never caused a problem. Why would it now? It needs to be put on the agenda and it needs to come back the way it was.
Carter Sterns, I'm here once again with some questions about our village marquee. When I brought this up last time, you digged my attention that your town hall meeting sign was taken down so they could put up something about Santa Claus. In January, once again, your town hall meeting was put up for the meeting on January fifteenth. Here's a picture that just went on Facebook. It's still up on the marquee and this is speculative. Last time I brought it up, your reply answered something to be a pet public works and didn't have time to go up there and change it. My husband worked public works about thirty-five years. You told that to change it, they would change it. The opinion in the village right now is you're using this for your political game, so for your next election. This needs to be for everything in town. And if you look at the number of people that come to meetings anymore, you can count it on two hands usually. How about using the marquee to let people know when the board meetings and committee meetings are? Not everyone in this village is on Facebook. I've talked to people that didn't know the meetings were here, they didn't know they happened. They don't go on Facebook, they don't do social media at all. So, how about using a village sign to inform people about village meetings that maybe more people can come up and see and hear the truth and matches the BS that Mr. Pritzavladi and Mr. Roth like to put up with their bodies? Let people know that you're here so they can come see for themselves.
Pat Couch. My first comment is regarding the agenda. I noticed on the agenda, every item, forensic audit, Dr. Director Finch, standing committees, Clerk Farmer-Furth, abandoned vacant houses, Director Tommy McCoy, review code red, trustee Debbie Williams, on and on. Now, to the last one about the ordinance seventeen dash zero zero six, Gary Bell. I think he's still a trustee, did we forget about that? That's one thing. This past week, I went on, on Sunday night looking for the agenda. I always go to the website to look for the agenda. Several times, I went to the agenda and it was blank. There were two postings, one for the special and one for the second early meeting, but our regular agenda was nowhere to be found. It was all blank. Now, I don't know when it was ever changed because I got tired of looking, but I wish it would be up there so the people that do look at the website can see that agenda. And forensic audit, dear Lord, yes, we need it, get it done, thank you.
Hi, Parkman. I wanted to talk about code red. I think it's important to get the, how many heads to send out, notify code red about what's going on, emergencies, but how many residents are actually on their program? Is it really worth it to pay that money when only a small number are part of that?
Rico Warden.
You have to speak up, please.
Rico Warden. I've been living on two seventeen, two eighteen Peterson Avenue. For the last three years, it is, the whole block is filled with trash, people moving out. And the representative on that block, her name is Sue, she rides up and down that block every day. And all that trash makes it look like the junkyard, like the cancer sun. I mean, from, from, what's, between Carroll and Peterson, the whole place looks terrible. I mean, I'm just scared for my church members to come over and visit. The church comes and picks me up every Sunday. And they were like, why they got all this trash, people move out? It's been there for like six months, I mean, this total trash. I mean, it's terrible. That's, that's, that's a problem. And I think it should be addressed, definitely. That's two seventeen and two eighteen Peterson Avenue. Sue is representative, she rides up and down that block every day, and she does nothing about it.
Good evening, Board of Members, Trustees, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Coleman here. I'm revisiting an issue that I brought up to the Board about four months ago. And it's regarding the lights, the street lights on Jeffrey Avenue. Those very same three, uh, four street lights that I was talking about then are still in the same condition there. One thing is, one of my greatest concerns is that the light post which was knocked down has not been replaced, which is at an intersection right next to the library, where the children, should they want to go there to study, to go on the internet, their safety is being jeopardized by it being poorly lit in that area. Now, again, it's been four months since I visited this issue. And, you know, what's this, public works? Okay, Mr. Mayor, you know, nothing's been done, basically. Four months. And again, this is a very, to me, this is something that should be a great concern to the community or to the village at large, because again, children are coming to and from that library right there. And that area is poorly lit, anything could happen to those kids, okay? So, if we don't want to go for the residents, at least consider the kids. Get somebody out there to put, I mean, two of those lights that are out are just light bulbs. Four months, and the light bulbs have not been replaced. Then the one, and then another, the lamp is completely knocked off the pole. You can replace that at the same time. And then, oh, God, if you want to take your time and put it in the pole, then okay. But public works needs to get on the job, it's been four months. And then these are just light bulbs. These are not fire hydrants where you have to dig up or anything. These are, I mean, how long do you, how, or how long should it take for you to change a light bulb? Four months? Public works, who's the director? Who's the trustee? It's been four months, thank you.
Right way. I think I understood that it costs thirty thousand dollars to tear down a house. What if the house is not worth thirty thousand dollars? Or can I, or anybody get a private demolition company to tear it down for me? So, can I meet with the person that made that statement today and ask, how do we go about doing that? And the second thing is, is that I know a lot of people in this hall, I mean, in all this here. Here Bernie is talking, but I've been knowing Bernie for two years, ever since I've known her, something about money. She must have known where every dime in this village, that's been her thing, ever since I've known her. Show me where the money, show the resident where the money, no, I have to show it to you. So, it's nothing personal, but that's just the way she is. And the rest of the boy, you gotta step up there and let it visit. I mean, you got a lot of work to do and I know it, but all you have to do is sit down and let it do it. And there's another thing, there's an old cliché set. You know the things I used to do? Boy, you can't do it.
You said it costs thirty thousand, she said it costs thirty thousand dollars to tear down a house or demolition a house, did you?
Yes, the house that I live, there needs to be demolition, you can give it forty thousand.
Give me a buck.
Now, that's big.
Right.
Sir, I'm not going to, I'm trying not to say anything, but usually when you say what you had to say, we don't yell out the, but I mean, but you had your, but you had your free choice, but then you had to.
Okay, all right, all right.
See, that's one thing, it's a big one.
But if you put, uh, I'm sure to hear the answer, sir, I will be answering those questions in a few minutes. Soon as everyone gets through, if there's anybody else coming up. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the person that is now working in the library as a program director. Um, congratulations. Uh, thank you very much. I've been getting correspondence and, uh, hopefully, you know, we can go back and forth. And as you stated, the person that does the correspondence here in the village is also, uh, Debbie Williams, so it's trustee Debbie Williams. So she, you know, works in the library too. So that's, that's, that's a good fit. The accounts payable is usually on the back, but as I was told today, sometimes it's not on the back. We're going to start trying to see if we can put a draft on the back. So I don't want someone coming back later and say, well, you, you paid this, then I find I hasn't been paid. So what we're going to try to do is have draft put on there. So if there's a draft, that's exactly what it means. Doesn't mean that it's cut and sold, but we can see if we can get back to doing, to get you that done. Um, and because you do vote, I'm sorry, we do vote on it on board meeting after the comments on the board, I'm sorry, from the, uh, public comments. So you get a chance to ask those questions before they get, that's why it's not public comment on, um, board time is not at the very end. You have comments at the beginning because you have the department heads here and quite naturally other things that are going to be voted on. You have a chance to weigh in on those things at that time. Um, and if the village sign's still at the town hall meeting, I mean, if there's something that's on there, then, then, okay, fine, it's not a problem. I, I don't know. I, I'm not going to even try to get into political things, but if there's nothing up there, you're right, we could put on to have a great day or, or whatever, uh, you know, have a nice day or be careful or whatever the case may be. It's just so happens that it stayed up here all that time. It wasn't up there on purpose. I really won't tell you that. Uh, but, you know, only thing I can say is that, yes, we can put those things on there. The good things is going on, we get, we get, uh, so much submitted. And, uh, but there's things, there's certain things we don't do on, on, on the board quite naturally, but, uh, other things, and this is village related, uh, entity, yes, we, we put it up there on, on, on the board. But just what stayed up there a little longer, there's nothing that came up, but something comes up, you suddenly, there's so much, the other trustees want to put something up there and the village related, they, they fill out their work and they put it in. Um, sorry that the website, um, was not on, the, uh, agenda was not on the website, um, but, uh, we're, we're, we gotta work on that too with the person that does the website at the time. So I cannot speak for that person, but like I said, I would give back to that person and, and let them know that, uh... That we need to be more, uh, new diligent of getting the website updated weekly, not monthly. Um, Peterson Avenue and the trash in that block. I appreciate that gentleman saying that because I ride around and I have brought that to the attention of the people, the department heads and, and, uh, that's, that's involved in that and the department that's involved in that. It's a shame that it's just like that. We cleaned it up and then they put it back out there like we're their personal garbage collectors or whatever, but that happens, that'll be going on also if I've been out here. Soon as you clean it up, you're hoping that they stop going and they look at it, well, they cleaned it up this time. Put something else out there, they look at that too. And that happens, not just on Peterson, but everywhere else, but Peterson more so because you got people that, some of these homes that are squatted. And we just got to talking about thirty thousand dollars to demolish a home. Yes, we got a lot of things involved in that. And you're right, but you cannot, and this goes to the other question. You can't as a per, as a private citizen go into a demolition house. Please don't try to do that. Please don't even think about doing that because you will be arrested. So I'm just hoping that nobody tries to say, well, okay, it's next to me, let me knock it down. Don't do that. Uh, it, it has to go through a proper, uh, change. It has to be, uh, inspected, it has to be, uh, made. There's a lot of things involved in that, so that's where the price goes. So I don't want to see anyone that, I, I hear fires that are going on, having abandoned buildings, someone took bags and they don't have, please don't do that because we never know what's watching. So we're trying to get to as many as we can. Um, there's a lot of things that go into it. I hate to devour something that may, may be able to be saved, but once you demolish it, it's no coming back. So right now, we're trying to, and you can see why we don't, cannot do a whole lot because it costs that much. It costs lots, we don't have so many, but believe me, please don't try to go and, and take it into your own values and then say, okay, well, I don't like it, I wanna, because it may backfire. You said it don't fire me, except yours don't fire. So please don't try that. The streetlights, uh, again, I'm bringing to the department head and let them know that this is something that's ongoing, the residents are asking questions about it. And, uh, then when I have submitted some things to him already, that some of the residents have asked and emailed me and, and left messages at the front. So I forward those to those departments, uh, when I do get those questions and let those departments, uh, know and also the village manager, he gets a copy of it and, uh, he can see it for himself that, y'all people are concerned, it makes sense. You don't want to live next to, to, to the problem area. Nobody does. That being said, uh, I will go with question to the comments from trustee, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank the program liaison, the kind of the public library and welcome her to the community. I've had the pleasure of working with her on a couple of events already and I'm really looking forward to future events collaborating with the library. We have a lot planned individually and collectively. And Mr. Coleman's concerned about those lights. I pass by those same streets myself very often and I was wondering if we could get, uh, Mr. Weller to include that in his report next week. I'd like to know what instructions he's been given, has he been given to do anything to that street yet? And if not, somebody needs to give him some direction because that should be taken care of. And as stated earlier, the Valentine's for Veterans program is going on for another week. We have several Valentines at both the library and the village hall and we're trying to get at least two hundred cards filled out. We can fill out more than one. You can take a few home if you have to, there's, there's hundreds available. And trying to get them back in my hands by February eleventh. We'd like to get as many cards to the veterans as possible and show them our love and appreciation at this particular Valentine's Day. And last part of my part of my report, I am hoping that I can get through this court without being interrupted and called out. Because apparently this is the thing lately, this, whenever I say something, it comes out and it's totally different. I just want to go on record and say is the reason why I do not go into some people's offices to discuss business is because of exactly what happens here tonight. Everything I say is misconstrued or mishandled. I have a chain of emails, I have it in writing actually, that when, when the clerk asked for the items to run the agenda, I sent my request at nine twenty-one on January thirty-first to the clerk. And at nine fifty-eight, I received an email from the clerk saying, "Mayor Burgess stated that the employee handbook is not under the purview of the trustees. It has been stricken from the agenda. Please communicate with the village administrator Chris and him directly." Now, that was at nine fifty-eight. At ten-ten, I sent an email to the village clerk, the mayor and the village administrator, "I disagree. All policies and procedures are to be approved by the board. If the mayor refuses to acknowledge my request, I will follow up in another way." This is on paper. Something like this that would take place in someone's office, I can't confirm or deny. On paper, I can confirm it. All I'm asking is, we could really get more card to get along if we didn't keep trying to one-up each other. I just wanted something on the agenda and I wanted to know what the process is. And the process is if two trustees want something on the agenda, it should be on the agenda. And the mayor was copying all of this, even from train to train. So I think he was aware of the fact that there was an item on there. I'm not trying to argue as a Mr. Mayor, and I don't like it when it happens on Tuesday nights. And I really wish that we had a better relationship, but it's never going to heal if this continues. But I do have the emails. I don't have to lie. That's why I do everything on paper. Thank you very much.
Trustee Bell.
My committee is the public safety committee and our meeting will be on February eighteenth, eleven AM right here in Rotunda. Myself and the fire chief, I'm working with the DNR, trying to get us a generator to power the back building, community center, and possibly even if it's based on power disability during disaster. So we have a place to store bodies, you know, people. If you're displaced, we have a place to go, state one, state all. And right now, that's our biggest concern is a generator to power the two buildings. That's what we're coming for. The Department of Natural Resources has a surplus from there and from overseas from the military, from various countries. And we're, next one day next week, we're taking a ride to Atasueo, so to see what we qualify for. And that was the end of my report.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I do know that I opened up some, trusty size of language for those ordinances that we talked about two weeks ago. If you could still send me your comments, uh, the whole board, uh, for the finance policy by this Friday. I haven't seen many things, so I'm not sure if there's any questions or you guys just haven't sent them. But if you send them by this Friday, please come back and press it back on the agenda in two weeks so that we can discuss again. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee is next.
Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, question, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the housing committee is tentatively going to meet on February nineteenth. We're going to review the scope of work for, um, what's required for people to pass inspections. Um, once that gets completed and I type that up, I will, uh, give it to Ms. McCoy for her input if she wants to add anything or take something out. Uh, the current one that's in place is redundant. There's like sixty-four items on it and it's, it's the same stuff over and over again. Um, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. Uh, I want to respond to the, uh, situation about the, uh, streetlights. Now, uh, I'm aware of the, uh, streetlights that are out of service around the library. Now, uh, that has been on Public Works list for quite a while. We have, uh, one pole was hit the second time, so that's why that pole is down. And there are, there's a wiring program, uh, problem with those two particular, uh, street, uh, poles, but Kevin is working on it. I, I know it's taking a while, but it has been brought to the, to a Public Works intention and he's, and he's working on it. Trustees are only, can only send the information to the Public Works person so he can work on it, but he's actually working on that particular area. And I'm quite sure you know, as you reported before, that, uh, that information has been sent to, uh, Public Works and they're working on it just to give him to, uh, that information. Now, the other thing I want to work, uh, talk about is that our primary job as trustees is to follow the money. Okay? Since I've been in office, there has been so much, uh, lack of transparency here that we don't have a handle on what's supposed to be going on. Our only goal, and our currently goal, and what we were elected for, is to follow the money. All this extra committee stuff, yes, it's all good and that's what you're supposed to do, but our primary job, when you get up and every trustee has a, a goal, a, a thing that they have to do, is to know where the money is. And if we don't have documentation, we can't, we don't know where the money is. There's questions that we need to be asked. We have been going on and round, rounding this circle to find out just where money is that our tax dollars and how it's being used. We should know that. When you wake up in the morning, you should know that fifty thousand dollars was taken out of something and be paid from the water fund. We, that's stuff we should know, that's what we were elected for. That's not have, that has not been done. The second thing I want to talk about is the settlement agreement. This is all about transparency. You as a resident have a right to know what's happening with your tax dollars. You have a federal, state and South Village poll that you have to, that government officials have to adhere to, that we have to know where this money is. When you, when you guys ask for the question, we should be able to give you some kind of answer about your tax dollars. I hope that these government officials here that were elected by the people will be able to follow the law since we are now in the settlement agreement and we should get information accordingly, but we'll see. We striving for open, honest government. And what we trying to achieve, we can't do it without documentation. We don't want to hear, I can't get the reports, I don't want to hear. If you spent five dollars of my money, of your money, you want to know where it's coming from. And that's what we entitled to. And, uh, my, but my closing line is every trustee up here should be following the money. That's our only goal. If you don't do anything with these committees, our goal as elected, as residents of South Village is to find out where your money is. And that's the end of my report.
Trustee Todd.
Ordinance review committee will meet on February tenth at six PM here in the Rotunda. And, um, and we're going to be discussing the hiring and the spending freeze ordinance. So if you could get that information to me before Monday so that I could present it to my committee, so if you have any comments. And we will also be taking care of this rehab. The other thing that was brought to my attention with false alarms, there's an issue that has come up that when the fire department has responded, they responded to a fire alarm. The, it's, it happens, I think, three times where the residents refuse to let the fire department in. So we have to put something in that ordinance. We're going to discuss it on that Monday. And there was also a business, the same thing, refused to let the fire department in. So I think we're going to need to add some language to the false alarm because if they're refusing to let these, you know, the fire department in, what is the liability on the village if a fire broke out and they refuse to let them? So that's one of the things we are going to be discussing. And so that ends my report.
Thank you. Um, I have very, that's like, I, I, only thing I have to say is, I'm hoping that, and I've said it so many times, the meeting can does business as business, keeps the personality, the personalization, the name calling, the giving, all these innuendos out of conducting a meeting. These are business meetings. If you came here to see a show, it shouldn't be that you, because that's getting itself out for. But you came here to hear your business dollars at work, wherever they may be, whatever you stretch it, because every single dollar that you voted is your, is your dollar that came out of house paper. There's no tree back there that you know, you have and they grow money. So this is what it should be, it should be kept on that level, not personalization. It's not because I'm like, yeah, well, he looked at me wrong, well, he, that's, 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 that's not what this is for. And I'll say it again, I'm here. If you feel that you don't want to talk to me, okay, fine. I'm fine, but, but to keep saying that I can't do this because of you, I have, is a personal thing, I'm sorry. It's a business. And if we don't run this as a business, it's going to fall. And we have ran it as a business, that's why we have money to go out and do other things with, forensic audit or whatever else. And there's a comment, usually there's a time where you, you had to figure out how we gonna pay payroll. We had to take money out of wherever we can get it from. So we trying to run this as a business that's responsible. Trying to run it in a, in a green, in a, in a, in a black level instead of in the red. And we can't do that with back and forth. We have, we have to come together. We don't come together for nothing else. We need to come together. So the comment does, does, does. Subtle as that. All that other stuff, you don't even need to bring it up. And then when we start disrespecting one another, get to a point where now you gotta yell it. You gotta, I'm gonna get up and leave and all this because I can't get this or whatever. This is business. I'm sure you don't go to, 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 uh, to wherever it is that you go and you get done business and they don't say something that you like, you gonna get mad and walk out. So that being said, I accept the motion to adjourn. Do move by, I guess, trustee Brewer, second by trustee Bell, all in favor?